Commissioner Paul, do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner McDonald. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? And motion passes six, zero. And Commissioner Wright is absent, or I'm sorry, Mayor Proton Wright is absent tonight. We have, no one signed up for public comment? Oh, okay. Do we have a city manager's report?
I lied earlier when I said no. I did forget because I'm already in vacation mode. Friday and all of next week I will not be here, so Stephanie will be the one to, to take care of any issues that come up. Although I will be available by phone.
Perfect.
That's it.
I'm sure she can handle it. Girl power, right? Anyway, okay. Never mind, it's an inside joke. Okay. We will move on to remarks and inquiries by the city commission. Does anybody have anything?
No.
Commissioner Rudin.
Just wanted to put it on the record, our stoplight out there, there was another accident out there Friday afternoon. At first in the bypass.
First in the bypass.
So, I guess we finally got our letters sent out.
Yes. Well...
Those are signed and out.
Yeah.
And... His name just popped out of my head. The district engineer for our area for an NMDOT. He is going to come in at one of our next commission meetings. And give a short presentation and then be available for questions on that, that area of the signal, or lack thereof.
Can we get a traffic count done before the heat gets here? Can we do one at that intersection?
We don't have the capability to do that, no.
Okay. Is, could we be able to do one on First Street? The amount that's coming off of First Street onto it?
Let me check up.
Okay.
I don't want to say yes tonight. I, I need to check.
How do we not have the capabilities?
To, to do it across the bypass?
Yeah.
Uh, there's four lanes and a median, we, we don't have that type of, of counter.
With the two?
Yeah, we just, we don't have that equipment.
That's all I had.
Okay. Anybody else? Well, it's encouraging that they're coming and ask questions.
Just blowing smoke and mirrors, that's all it is.
Don't be a Debbie Downer, you never know.
We have them on the record saying that they were going to put one in, so...
Yeah, I know. I'm trying to be positive.
How many accidents, how many people have to die before we put it in there?
My husband had a good friend that died at that intersection, so I understand. Okay, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Does anybody have?
I'd like to pull item three.
Item three? Okay. Anything else? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item three?
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Burnett. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Melton. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Carl Melton.
Aye.
Nick Paul.
Aye.
Stephen Burnett.
Aye.
Josh Rudin.
Aye.
Sharon McDonald.
Aye.
Susan Payne.
Aye. Motion passes six, zero. We will move on to items removed from the consent agenda. Item three. Consider an act upon the adoption of final publication of ordinance sixteen seventy-two. It is amendment to our ordinances concerning the disposition of real property. And, did you have a specific question?
I just voted no last time, so I just wanted to be able to vote no this time.
Okay. So you don't have any questions or anything? Anybody else? No? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve item three?
So moved.
Motion from Commissioner Paul, second from Commissioner McDonald. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Carl Melton.
Aye.
Nick Paul.
Aye.
Stephen Burnett.
Aye.
Josh Rudin.
No.
Sharon McDonald.
Aye.
Susan Payne.
Aye. Motion passes five, one. Okay. We will move on... To, um... I guess we just move on to public hearings? This is my first public hearing, it could be. Consider, it's item seven, consider an act upon the question of whether or not the Alcohol Beverage Control Division should grant a restaurant liquor license with on-premises consumption to Rizzo's Restaurant, located at fourteen eighty North White Sands Boulevard. Why do I feel like I've seen this before? No? No?
I thought we did one once before.
I thought we did too. Okay.
Well...
Yes, go ahead, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Rachel.
Yes, Madam Mayor, commissioners. So, like you just stated, Rizzo's Mexican Restaurant is seeking a restaurant liquor license to the on-premises, for on-premises consumption. The applicant does meet the zoning requirements. So if you have any questions of the applicant, he is present.
Does anybody have any questions? No? Okay. I guess we just, I need a motion to approve item seven?
I'll make a motion to approve item seven.
Okay, a motion from Commissioner Melton. Do I have a second? A second from Commissioner Riordan? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? And motion passes six, zero. And we will move on to new business. Consider an act upon, I'm sorry, this is a presentation. Okay, this is weird. Okay. We have a presentat-
Just go with it.
Okay. You understand why I'm confused, right? Okay, good. All right. I just wanted to make sure. This time change is killing me, so, okay. We have a presentation from Learn New Mexico. Michelle Perry is the owner, and she has a presentation for us. I'm sorry, it was on the agenda a little wonky, so I'm a little confused. I apologize.
I would like to talk to you tonight about an opportunity. You have a presentation, I believe, in front of you, and the title of the presentation is the Rule Innovation Stronger Economy Grant Program. This is a USDA grant-funded opportunity. And tonight, before I get into this particular grant-funded opportunity, I want to talk to you a little bit about our local demographic information. So in the community of Alamogordo and Otero County, I'm going to paint a picture of what we look at like as a community demographically, with our poverty rates and with our workforce needs. So that'll be the first part of, of this presentation. And then we will talk about how this grant opportunity addresses those, some of those needs. So to begin with, in the, um... All right. In the next slide, you'll see there is some information from the U.S. Census Bureau twenty twenty-one data. Our population, Alamogordo's median household income, that being below the United States median household income for comparison. Our poverty rate about eighteen percent. Education attainment rates in Alamogordo look pretty good as far as high school diplomas. Ninety percent of Alamogordians have a high school diploma. However, there is a little gap between those who have a high school diploma and those who have a bachelor's degree. And you'll see that there's about twenty-three percent who have a bachelor's degree. And therein lies a gap, a gap that we could potentially address with use of good funds. Going on with demographic data, you can see our Otero County data. That poverty rate of twenty-two percent, twenty-two point one percent is going to be really important here in just a minute. And you'll understand why. Also notable is our Hispanic poverty rate is that of a higher rate. Of the people living in Alamogordo who have a high school diploma, fifty-three, fifty-two point three percent of those people are living in poverty. Of the people who are unemployed, sixty-one percent of those people are living in poverty. Our Otero County median household income is that, that is much lower than the United States median household income. And our veterans also live below the poverty level, at approximately twenty-one percent of them live below the poverty level. In July of twenty twenty, the Arrowhead Center, which is based out of New Mexico State University in Las Cruces, this is an entrepreneurial incubator. It is a large organization that promotes entrepreneurism, business, small business development. And they were hired by our state to write a report about each county and the economic situations for those counties. Here is highlights from the Otero County report from the Arrowhead Center. To begin with, our Otero County per capita income for eighteen was thirty-four thousand six hundred and thirty-six. That of the nation was fifty-four thousand. Again, so you're starting to see a picture of, of a discrepancy, a disparity. The percent of growth per capita income in, between fourteen and eighteen, twenty-fourteen and eighteen, was eight point six one, and the nation was at fifteen point seven. So, in that same report, it was provided that basic industries in Otero County would be considered these following. Federal employment, agricultural sector, retail trade, mining, and state government. In that same report, it also indicated opportunity for potential growth in particular job sectors. And those job sectors are accommodation and food, arts, entertainment, and recreation. Film production would fall under that. Healthcare, social assistance, information, that would be like back of office administrative support, professional and scientific services such as defense and aerospace, and agriculture. Moving along, this slide might be a little hard to read, but I'll give you the highlights here. These are industry employment projections from the New Mexico Economic Development Division. And for the particular sectors, the employment sectors that I've circled, those would have high rates of potential percentage changes between now and the future long-term projection. Accommodation for food services, arts, entertainment, recreation, healthcare and social assistance, information, professional, scientific, and technical services. I highlighted those because there is, luckily, we are starting to paint a picture here in that there is a need to address certain job sectors over others in our community, in our county. So moving into the next slide, this is the local economic plan for Otero County that is posted on the New Mexico EDD website. And there are six goals. And in these goals, you're going to see that we hope to create additional jobs. We hope to develop an industrial and business park for Otero County. We hope to cooperate between public and private entities. And then number five and six are very special in that we hope to foster the utilization of Holloman and White Sands, and that we hope to develop our community's resources towards vocation, vocation development and skill training. Again, in reference to New Mexico EDD, target industries for Otero County would be defense and aerospace, such as the professional and scientific industries, film production, including arts and entertainment, desalinization and water treatment technologies, back office, like information, and agriculture. So, now we're at the crossroads. We have a background, we have some information about our community of Alamogordo and the larger Otero County. Now let's talk about the provisions of this funding opportunity. We're going to call this funding opportunity the RISE program. And the goal for this particular program is basically to provide innovation centers and job accelerator programs for the communities who apply. Let's detail that out a minute. The award amount is between five hundred thousand to two million. There is a required twenty percent match that will need to be applied to each activity within the proposal for this particular project. The performance period would be between September of this year and December of twenty-seven. The grant application is due on grants.gov on April twentieth. Funds may be used, and this is unusual. The funds may be used for the purchase or construction of an innovation center. Costs that can also be directly related to operations of that innovation center. Salaries, support programs, travel expenses, and utilities and operating expenses of an innovation center. Eligible applicants would be those listed here, including nonprofits, state entities, and public bodies. Allowable costs, now this would be granting eighty percent to the applicant with a twenty percent match fund. And those funds can be applied to these following, the eighty percent and the twenty percent match come together to apply to these following items, which you've seen in slide eleven. So let's talk specifically about the matching fund, the twenty percent per activity. They may be spent during the grant period, they may be from eligible sources. They cannot be outside of that grant period. They must be spent in the pro-ratio portion, and they can be in form of cash or in-kind contribution. The matching funds cannot be from another federal grant source. That can, we, we also can use reimbursed travel expenses, hours worked, and those kinds of in-kind contributions as match funds. The narrative is requiring that we address the Job Accelerator Partnership, and I will talk about my recommended partnership here in just a moment. The characteristics of our targeted region, which would be Otero County, including Alamogordo, and how we meet, how our project would meet the goals of the RISE program. The priorities on this project would leverage next-generation gigabyte broadband services to promote entrepreneurship based in geographical areas that have established agricultural and technology sectors such as ours. In the second bullet, it also must include the smallest communities with the lowest incomes, where at least twenty percent of the population is living in poverty. So while Alamogordo doesn't quite make that mark, Otero County does. And then, of course, the priorities is to support workforce development. So moving quite quickly into the proposed goals, so kind of getting down to business here. What do we hope to do? My recommendation and the Center of Commerce's recommendation would be to build and support a county-wide business incubator facility. Provide worker training to assist in the creation of new jobs. Train the existing workforce with skills for higher-paying jobs. Develop a base of skilled workers and improve their opportunities to obtain high-income jobs. Continuing with our proposed goals, after looking carefully at the data regarding our job sectors that would potentially grow in this region, I would recommend we focus on these four sectors. You can see their potential growth rates. And whenever you see a star rating, you know that that is not only a high potential growth rate, but that's also a high income-earning job sector. And I've also indicated on the bottom two, with healthcare and social assistance, Gerald Champion Regional Medical Center and NMSUA, as benefiting as well, in addition to our community. Because as you know, we are always needing medical help and care in our community. And then finally, on the last bullet, with the professional, scientific, and technical services, of course Holloman White Sands, our desalinization. Even White Sands National Park could benefit from a job growth sector, a growth in a job sector that could promote their businesses and interests. So the Otero County Innovation Center, what might it do? It might house the Alamogordo Center of Commerce, a visitor's center for our community. It could be a co-work space that provides computer and internet access services to those who would wish to, to, to let, to be there in that, in that setting, to work together, to conference. Technology Training Center, utilizing computer applications and technology. We have a virtual reality lab at NMSU, and I would like to see VR expanded as a useful tool in the workplace. Soft Skills Training Center. Soft skills would be those customer service skills, those skills that help front-facing businesses connect with potential clients and customers. STEM Training Center. I'm very much a proponent of STEM education at all levels. I would say from age five to a hundred and five, I don't, we don't ever stop learning. And science, technology, engineering, and math are near and dear to my heart. And I believe that there is a lot of potential in educating our community in ways to expand STEM knowledge. ServeSafe Training Center, I bring this up because ServeSafe is the, my, my preferred product of choice to train food managers. So my company does that work, and we obviously have a high need for restaurant food service workers. And every restaurant must have a food manager on-site, on-location during opening hours. And so ServeSafe is, is certified with the National Restaurant Association, and, and we use their curriculum to train food, food managers and get them certified. An entrepreneurship incubator, a small business accelerator, a conference and venue hosting space, and a food truck kitchen rental. Our food truck businesses are booming, and they all need certified, approved kitchens to create their delicious meals out of. So, potential partners. So this is really the ask, right here on this slide. The applicant for this grant is proposed to be the Alamogordo Center of Commerce. The mission for the Alamogordo Center of Commerce is to serve as an advocate to our members by promoting and enhancing the economic health and business climate of our community. We would ask that the matching partner be the city of Alamogordo. Your mission, as you know, is to, so, exists solely for the purpose of providing the best possible services to the citizens of Alamogordo. We would also ask that Otero County consider us as a partner in this endeavor as we are trying to address particular issues and needs across the entire county. The Small Business Development Center, I have spoken with Trish Livingston, who runs our SBDC, and she is excited about this opportunity. Workforce Solutions, who I have worked with intimately the last year. And New Mexico State University Alamogordo Studio G. Studio G is our local small business accelerator for our NMSUA students. I happen to run that contract out of NMSUA. One Hundred Percent Otero, which is a, a nonprofit organization here in town whose mission is to end childhood trauma. If you don't know about a One Hundred Percent Otero, I highly recommend you look into them. They are a very worthy partner. Obviously Holloman and White Sands Missile Range, some of our largest employers in our local area. The National Restaurant Association, NMSUA, particularly the nursing program. And the Flickinger Center has also indicated to me that they would like to partner in this endeavor and support us as well. And many, many others, I would imagine. As we continue to move through this process, should you be in agreement to help us with the twenty percent match, then we would move forward quickly to get that proposal written and provided into grants.gov, submitted into grants.gov, and, and hope for, for an award. So, having said that, are there questions that either Mr. Caesar or I could address?
I have a question. So this would actually help build and bring people here, to this community, and, you know, because you have the training. So would that also come with a commitment for people participating in that program?
Correct. So, we would hope that we would serve as a training center. So for instance, there are many small groups who must have a location to train, and providing that opportunity to people who are outside perhaps of Otero County, in addition to the people who are here in Otero County, would be an opportunity for revenue stream.
I have a couple of questions. Who would actually be operating the innovation centers? Would that be the Chamber?
Yes.
Okay. And, so essentially, hypothetically, if the city went along with this, they would be responsible for the match. So what happens after two thousand twenty-seven?
Right.
When that grant money runs out?
Excellent. So sustainability is a huge part of a grant proposal. So in developing any federal grants proposal, you have to think sustainable beyond the terms of the grant. Well, the first thing would be naturally to apply for more grants. And so we always would be keeping that cycle going and, and using this opportunity as leverage for other opportunities. So that would be the first thing. The second and more important thing is to generate revenue. So you would generate this revenue, the Center of Commerce operates now as its own entity. It would continue in that type of model, but with the support of the city, it would continue to, to generate at a larger capacity in these, with these larger missions, these larger efforts, that would hopefully generate that, the amount that, of money that we anticipate, and therefore sustain it beyond that twenty-seven year.
And one more. What determines, that's a big range, five hundred thousand to two million, what determines what that twenty percent we're talking about?
Great. So, me personally, here as, as on behalf of the Center of Commerce, I would recommend we'd apply for the full two million, and that would equate to a four hundred thousand match.
Do we have that in our budget?
Yes.
That was easy. So, does anybody else have any questions? Okay. So... Just to piggyback on what Commissioner Melton said, because I was thinking along the same lines. So this training, how would they qualify for it? Because you're saying generate revenue, so is this, you know, would they...
We would charge people. I mean, part of our program would be to basically take an innovation center, put it together. So the acquisition of property, perhaps any remodeling that needed to happen, the equipment, personnel. We would actually stand up particular programs that we felt were of most interest in supporting our economic footprint.
And how would they pay for that?
And so, organizations would come and, and pay for those, those trainings, and I'll give you an example. So, in previous lifetimes, I, I had a large area in which people would want to rent in order to host a training. We had the technology that they needed, we had the large screens, the, you know, the computers, the cameras, the, all that. And so we would charge a price, and they would come there to have their meetings there. And so it worked very, very well, because in that particular location, we had an industrial restaurant, industrial kitchen. And so they were able to cater out of there, and it worked, it worked very nicely. So that would be a model. However, that's not to say that there, there isn't other ideas. And as the Center of Commerce and the city were we to partner, we would, we would generate ideas on that in our, in our grant-writing endeavor, for it.
So, it would be more based on... Okay, I have to figure out how to word this.
Individual participation.
What's that?
It's going to be individual participation.
Yes, individual participation, but they would have to be part of an organization.
Wouldn't have to be. So for instance, say I was an organization, I was a, maybe a small business, and there were only two of us, and I had no office. I'm a new business, and I have no office. So I might want to pay the innovation center a small rent fee to have a co-working space that not only provides my computer space, but it can provide a printer, could provide a, you know, TV conference area.
But in terms of training, in terms of training, because that's what we're talking about, right? Is specific training?
There, there could be, be training, there could be a lot of different things that would happen at the innovation center.
Okay, all right.
Training definitely would be part of them.
Where do you envision the location? Would it be in Alamogordo proper, or in Otero?
So anywhere in Otero County. You know, Alamogordo proper would probably be the preference.
That's, like, if we're going to do the match.
If we're going to do the match, yeah.
There you go.
It's pretty important.
For the funding, it would have to be in Alamogordo.
Yeah, okay, okay, yeah.
Would you consider going to the county commission and asking for a split?
We, we could do that. I'm just here to present on behalf of the Center of Commerce, and these are just initial ideas, so, yes, sure.
I, I have another question, if, for this training center. So you would be competing with other training organizations throughout the state?
The nation.
The nation, okay.
Correct. So, writing federal grants is a highly competitive process. And so that is why we're already behind the ball on this. And so that is why we're already behind the ball on this. You know, so here we are hoping to submit, the Center of Commerce to submit on April twentieth. But yes, we will be, we will be challenged for sure. It'll be competitive.
And I know you were talking about the, I know virtual part, the virtual training. So is this where you would get your trainers? So they wouldn't have to come here to actually conduct the, the training? But it could be a classroom setting?
Absolutely. And we could be in the metaverse or we could be, you know, on Zoom. A lot of different options there. Possibilities are actually quite endless. You know, the proposal itself is still developing and we of course need a lot of input by stakeholders. But this is stop one to see if perhaps the city would like to be a considerable stakeholder. Because the, if you do, then you're, you have a voice. You, you know, you could mold this in a way that you see fit as a considerable stakeholder.
The two million max on that, is that yearly or is that over the whole period?
For the whole period.
So, so we're on the hook for four million, or four, four hundred thousand till two thousand twenty-seven?
Right.
So it's over that period?
Correct.
So for four years?
Yep.
So a hundred thousand a year.
A hundred thousand a year. So right now, you just, you still need to apply?
Right.
So, are we making a commitment tonight or what are we doing?
So that's why, as you said earlier, this item's a little bit wonky. I think is how you put it.
Yeah.
You can think of this much like a number of years ago when the regional jet people came before the city commission for staff to, to work in processing or helping to process this, this application. We need the authorization to, to do that. We're not committing, or you're not, commission's not committing four hundred thousand dollars tonight or a hundred thousand a year for the next four years. We would still, staff will have to come back to commission to have, to, to obtain the approvals to, to expend those type of funds. So really tonight, it's for the commission as a whole. Do you want staff to, to pursue this or not?
Okay.
Got a couple more questions.
Commissioner Rude.
It says for purchase or construction of, of an innovation center. So you utilize the money to buy a building somewhere in town, obviously. And then whatever's left, are you guys gonna buy or build?
Again, it, it's about stakeholders and everybody having a voice. The initial idea is to buy. Because repurposing a building that is already vacant would, I think, be a, a better way, in a lot of different ways, to proceed than actually building.
And then when will we know if we're on the hook for that money?
So the award will come prior to September. Since it's due in April, my guess is that they will probably have the awards announced in August, sometime in August. And then basically what happens is we get a letter from Martin Heinrich's office or somebody and they say, hey, you got this award. And then we have a few weeks. The program directors from the Department of Agriculture will then contact the, the entity applicant and then say, you've gotten this award, let's schedule our first meeting. And then we go from there. We have a considerable amount of time to talk about whether or not we actually want to accept those funds. My recommendation would always be to accept the funds if they're gonna be provided. But you don't, you aren't, you know, on the hook until that last ink is dry.
And then would Alamogordo be the fiscal agent for it since it is federal money? They need us?
The Center of Commerce would be the fiscal agent.
I just have one more question. When you submit the grant, do you have to have some type of, I guess, planned development for the healthcare and social assistance and then for the scientific and, and technical services? How you would actually develop that?
No, because what we can say is we are going to address those particular, that's what we have to do is we have to address certain job sectors. And we can say that we will develop that out with these fellow partners. So for instance, the health sciences, we would obviously use NMSU, their nursing program, Gerald Champion Regional Medical Center, their influence. And we would ask their help in, in actually teasing out the details on what that looked like. And that would come within the actual grant development over the course of the four years.
How, how does the training work as far as the individual? Like I, I've taken my food manager's card, but I did mine online. How does it work for just an individual just to come in?
So we would probably offer classes. There would have to be some kind of structure like that, you know, where an organization wanted. We have a lot of, a lot of small organizations who need CEUs. And so they, they would come in and ask to utilize the area. Perhaps a subcontractor like myself would want to use the area and, and host courses there. Perhaps the center themselves would like to host courses. The SBDC would like to host trainings and courses. So for instance, in, we've got the SBDC hosting courses out of the Center of Commerce now, right now. So that would, that would be kinds of the, the training that, that could potentially happen.
And do you know how many grants there? I, I'm assuming there's gonna be more than one.
So at the price point of two million, I believe that they're going to provide fifteen across the nation.
So it's gonna be a tough one.
Yeah. Yeah, it will be tough.
But if you got it, how cool would that be for Alamogordo? Okay.
I'd like to think so.
So does anybody else have any questions?
As far as the expenditure of the money in the event that we do get it, you say the Chamber will be in control of that?
The eighty percent that the federal government gives towards, of course, the city would be in control. Their twenty percent, if, if you chose to match.
We would have no say or any oversight as far as the city goes?
Well, the twenty percent match would be your say and oversight for sure. Absolutely. Yeah, that, that guarantees your, your seat at the table for sure. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's an honor, you know, for us to be able to partner with the city at the center.
Anybody else have any questions?
Well, I was just gonna add the, the goals in here. I mean, am I reading that right? Because the question that you just asked about the city having a say. So the, the information here for the accommodations, the arts, healthcare, and professional, you've already outlined what exactly is going to be a part of that program. So we're just agreeing to what your, your stats are here in this, in this proposal, right? In the proposed goals or is there something else?
It would, it will develop over the course of the next four weeks. Should you want to move forward together, we would want to join efforts to develop those proposed goals and we would do that electronically and through meetings and things like that.
But these are the things that you're looking at.
Those are just recommended.
And these are the things that we would have access to.
And then, those are just recommendations based on the generalized data that we can observe so far. They're just recommendations at this point.
Well, and I think tonight, it sounds like we are just basically giving our blessing to have staff work with Michelle or the Center of Commerce to move forward, go ahead. I mean, we're not committing one hundred percent any money yet, right? I mean, we're, we're waiting to see, we're saying that we're interested. Am I saying that right? Right?
Yeah.
That we're interested and that, that we would entertain the idea.
So just for clarity though, on the, on the deadline to submit, we would need a letter of support stating that you would match the twenty percent. Should we be awarded this proposal? And of, of course, you would read the proposal before we would submit it. And then you would say, alright, should we be awarded this, we will match. And that, that actually does, has to, have to go in before the deadline on April twentieth.
But that is gonna be like any other grant that you all are familiar with? So if you have the letter of support going forward and that's part of the reason, one of the reasons it's here tonight for your, your all's consideration. But just like any grant, you don't have to accept.
Accept it.
The monies. That will be during the award phase. So between now submitting the grant, getting the, the, you know, assuming the, the grant is awarded, that would be the time where we're coming up, putting together the agreements, the, every, everything that you're, you're asking about tonight, that would be the work that's happening from tomorrow on. So that when the time comes to accept the award, you have all that information. Those questions have been answered. Actually, we would be bringing agreements and whatnot before the commission.
Make sure nothing's changed, right? Right, right.
I have, how long has this program been in existence?
I know that the Rise Project was published last year. They come out with a notice of funding opportunities and beyond that, I don't know. I just know that this, this for sure is the second year I've been aware of it.
And how many, have you been in contact with any other communities that have been?
Who have been provided the Rise Grant? I have not. This has all come quickly.
I just wanna see how, how beneficial it has been towards their community.
There is a large webpage on the Department of Agriculture website dedicated to this project. And I didn't want to get into the weeds too much tonight about it. But if, if you were, if you were so inclined, you could just Google this title and, and it will pop up with an ample amount of information. It, it's, I think, well-established from what I can gather. I've written lots and lots of federal grants. You just don't see very many of them that say construction and purchase of property. So that was really what sparked our interest as a Center of Commerce. Because that's who I'm here on behalf of tonight.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. That's true. And your numbers, your poverty numbers were spot on for sure. And one thing we have to remember with that is we are actually higher than the state average for poverty. So Alamogordo is higher, or well, Otero County is higher than the state average. And, you know, I just like the, I, I just like the idea that if there's something we can do to change that.
I think education is a step forward to changing that.
I agree.
And anything educationally related, I think, is a positive force.
Yeah, I think the problem with a lot of people in poverty is that they don't believe in themselves, is what?
I say, I hate to say it, but some of them are lazy.
Well, I, you know, I mean, I, I don't know. I work with them every day and I would say it's not lazy as much as it is when you've lived like that for so long.
They get used to it.
You have no hope. Yeah, you get used to, well, you don't believe in yourself. You don't believe you're capable of doing anything else. It's the way you've lived, it's the way your parents have lived and, and your grandparents. And you just don't believe you're capable of doing more than that. So I think program, I actually think our government should do more requirements like this, to be honest with you. Because I think the more they have these, you know, I hate to say it, but the more they have people that can hold their hand and walk them through the process, the more competent, and I see this all the time. And so it's, the more they do that, the more competent they become. And I can, I personally have testimony after testimony of people that have even gone through our small programs. And one of them the other day, interestingly enough, I, when she first enrolled in our program, I was like, oh, Lord, help me. And then the other day, my secretary's husband was up at the hospital and this lady was drawing her blood and she said, tell Marge I said hi. And it was, it was the lady from that program. And we had encouraged her to go back to school after she went through our program and smack me, I deserve it. But she's working up the hospital in the lab now. I mean, that's pretty incredible. And I think, and this was somebody who had like high anxiety and just absolutely did not believe in herself. So I've seen things like this work and I know that they can. And I think that just personally for me, if we can offer these opportunities to people in our community, because, you know, you know as well as I do, the one thing that we hear often is there's nothing to do here. This plate, you know, and, and you hear it over and over. And it's not just nothing to do here, but they, they don't do anything, like you said. And you're, and you're right, you can call it that, but, but it's more than that. It's a psychological thing. It really is, so.
If we do agree to do this, the letter that we sent, are we gonna be on the hook for the full four hundred in the first year? Or is it something that we can spread out over?
Right, it's pro-ratio. As we spend down on each activity, so the project will be written activity by activity, year by year. And so it'll be the twenty percent on this activity, twenty percent on that activity. So it'll be spelled out.
So if you spend a hundred thousand, we gotta give you the?
Yeah, well, we'll do out the four years and then you'll see how that breaks down in the budget.
So if we went in and budgeted a hundred thousand a year, we would be probably okay? Or do we need to budget all in one year?
Potentially, it, it would work out if you budgeted the one hundred. But, 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 don't, you know, quote me on that. But here's the thing is, is that we still have to develop that in the next coming weeks. So that could look a lot of different ways. You know, we, we may have zero in the first year because it's just all planning, right? And then we hit doubly in the second year. It, it, it just depends on, on how the planning comes together.
So for, for budgeting, we would, from the city side, set aside the, the full four hundred thousand be placed in a project. That way we could carry it forward from year to year through the, potentially the four years. So it would, we would budget it totally upfront.
Regardless of whether we spent it the first year or not.
They'd just carry over.
Just roll, carry over, yeah.
Yeah, because we would just carry the, the remaining balance.
Yeah, that makes sense.
From fiscal year to fiscal year.
Perfect. Does anybody else have any questions?
We gonna focus on any of the vocational, like, I'm in the construction trade and I noticed we're not on any of these. I mean, they're, they're in here, but there's a huge demand in that industry. Are you gonna focus on any of that?
Why not? I mean, anything's possible at this point.
Construction laborers, HVAC, electricians, plumbers.
Right.
All of that is, is in, actually seen an email come across the other day on the, the builder's deal. There's a lady, I don't remember her name, that she's working for the schools that's trying to, to put some vocational programs back into high school that they shut down about twenty years ago, so.
That's the beautiful thing about a project like this. An innovation center can look a lot of different ways through the years. As we know, nothing stays the same, everything changes. And so, I mean, we're looking at these sectors right now just on the first, you know, run out the gate. But who knows what sectors we'd be looking at next and, and what that would mean for our economy. You know, that's, that's the great thing about an innovation center is we can be very innovative.
I actually like that idea. I think that's a really good idea. To eventually focus on construction.
You know, when I was in high school, you know, twenty, almost thirty years ago, you know, they drilled it in your head, go to college, go to college, go to college. And everybody wants to go to college and party and have a good time. Well, now we're suffering the consequences of that. Out in our industry, Steve's in it, Dusty's in it, I'm in it, Nick's kinda in it. You know, there's, there's just nobody to do the work, you know. And, and it's a, every contractor in Alamogordo I know of, actually, it's a nationwide problem.
I hear ya.
Is, is having problems getting people, so.
And educators as well. I mean, we have a massive crisis shortage of them, so yeah.
Actually, any industry, it seems like, fast food, you know, fast food or any of the, any of the restaurants. It seems like they're having problems too, so.
Right. So I would say let's put people to work and let's get them where they need to be so that they can be successful.
Figure out how to get them to wanna work. That's the hard part too, so.
I think when they figure out, well, not for everybody, but I do think when people figure out that it feels better than sitting around the house all day doing nothing. Not for everybody, I get it, I get it.
I see, sitting on my boat drinking beer and fishing is a good time, but it doesn't pay the bills.
But it's because you work, so it's different, yeah. Alright, does anybody else have any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Do you have your direction or do we need to make motion or?
Yeah, what do we have to do? Because.
I think there is a consensus that you would like staff to move forward in work to, to apply for the grant, correct?
Everybody on board with that?
I think so, yeah. So with that, though, is gonna include a letter. Everybody okay if I sign a letter?
Is that committing the money? Because that's.
It's agreeing that we will commit to. If, if the grant is awarded and the monies, the federal monies are accepted.
Then we'll have an item come forward that we vote on.
Okay, but Michelle just said we have to include a letter while she's applying for the grant.
That's standard for any grant.
Right, so what I'm asking is.
That's why we come before commission, that's why you had item number six, which you approved.
No, I get it. What I'm, what I'm asking the commission is everybody understands that and you're okay with me signing a letter to that. What I'm, what I'm asking the commission is everybody understands that and you're okay with me signing a letter to that effect, right?
And that letter is just our intention, but.
Intent.
Yes.
Like, I'm, I'm comfortable with the staff moving forward. I'm not quite comfortable with the price tag. Hopefully the county can chip in. Um, I mean, but we can move ahead. I think we have a consensus there.
Right. Okay. Okay. I think we're all on the same page then.
Excellent.
Right. Okay. So we don't need to vote on anything? No. That's what it says.
By giving that direction, you have acted upon it.
Alrighty. Is there anything else? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Someone?
Well, that was quick.
Dinner, dinner time.
Uh, we'll say a motion from Commissioner McDonald. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Commissioner Ruden. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed and motion passes six, zero.